...of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under a, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to review and accept the agenda?
So moved.
No second?
Seconded.
Okay, I'm turning the meeting over to Mrs. Asier and Mr. Becker.
May you take the vote on the motion?
Mr. Romano.
Yeah, thank you.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Martina Olliar?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm now turning the meeting over to Mrs. Asier and Mr. Becker.
Actually, I will basically just say that this was a result of some questions and comments that the board members had and some questions about the contract, and so we wanted to give our board the opportunity to speak with Mr. Harris and ask any questions they have, give him an opportunity to respond, and I don't know, Mr. Becker, if you wanted to add anything to that. So Jeff, if you can hear us, the board members have their microphones and they may have questions that they may ask. Do you have your contract in front of you as well?
I do not, but I know it quite well and I'm happy to answer any good questions throughout the contract, around our product, around our organization. It's really happy to be considered by as well as for the rest of our.
Okay, thank you.
Let me just start with my question. Hi Jeff, this is Nicole Cohen, and I think I probably have more questions than any of the other board members, so I'll just start going down the list. My first question is, why doesn't Parchment participate in the student privacy pledge as a signatory or the student data principles as an official supporter?
Well, that's a very, very good question. So, we've always identified FERPA, the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, as a federal law that we need to adhere to, and I felt that that is, you know, the letter of the law to protect student data, particularly around student record data. If there are other things that we can do to, you know, provide assurance to our members around the country of our commitment to student data protection and privacy, we definitely would consider those, but, you know, we believe that the letter of the law around FERPA is, you know, what we need to follow to do our job.
Okay, that's where my concern really lies, is with relying on FERPA as any sort of protection for student data, because I'm sure you're well aware that there really is very little protection when it comes to FERPA, so having that kind of plastered all over the place doesn't make me feel a whole lot better. And I'm under the impression, or as I understand it, FERPA doesn't apply to vendors, so can you kind of explain to me, because it says that in your contract that it does, and so I'm not understanding that.
Isn't that a great question? So, you know, the authors of FERPA, I think, were very smart in kind of how they created the law. They assumed that eventually at some point schools would need to identify what they were literally expected intermediary, that schools convene on to be able to deliver student records, and that's really the FERPA compliance that we take on. We take on a law as a real reason, and that gives us the authority to, you know, provide our services in a compliant manner. I should also mention that, you know, Perkstent has had an excellent track record. We've been doing this for nearly 20 years, represent more than 8,000 high schools all over the country, deliver this year alone well over 10 million transcripts, and we have never had any sort of, you know, fraud or tampering of student information.
So have you, has your organization had any data breaches?
We did not. Our organization has invested very, very heavily in the privacy and security of its data. One of the things that we do is, we go through an audit feature called SOC 2, S-O-C-Q. This is an audit that typically reserved for large financial institutions, but it's an audit that allows a third party to view not only our technology infrastructure, but the way the higher employees are physical facilities, and it's an audit that, you know, we continuously ask each and every year, in order to do business with any of our customers, including the military, the public spend, many colleges and universities, and of course, many, many large, large school districts, we've had to do enormous amounts of due diligence, and, you know, we've never had any sort of security breaches or issues there.
Okay. So in your contract, and in not just the contract with the school district, but also the end user agreements for the students that visit your site, whether it be the terms of use or the privacy policy, sorry, just lost my train of thought. Boy, what was I thinking of? In the contract and on the website, there are many areas where it refers to what you are going to give up on the students. I understand that the contract with the school district is different from some of the many concerns I have with the end user on the other end. I still have lost my train of thought trying to talk myself into it.
Places that kids would be taken to?
What's that?
You had concerns about places that kids might be taken to?
Well, that is a concern for me, so, okay, we were talking, you were explaining to me about, let me see if I can remember.
Was it maybe additional information that a student might upload that might?
Well, that's definitely on my list of concerns, but I was going down a very specific path and I forgot where I was headed. So let me just go into my, let me go to the contract and just ask questions, maybe it'll pop up in there. So, in the contract, when I'm looking at the contract, and it's got the new client data sheet, it's got the student information system, our version, and I'm assuming this is for upload of the roster?
Correct.
So you're, we will be giving you access to our SIS system, is that correct?
No, no, I'm glad you clarified.
Okay.
So we very purposely observe what we consider to be a push model, not a pull model, meaning you push the data to us that you want to provide to Parchment. We have no ability whatsoever of access in your student information system, and you wouldn't want to, right? You don't want a third party going into your sensitive information there. So, the purpose of our relationship is, it will allow you to easily upload your roster as well as your student records, so that these can be matched upon request and then securely delivered to the destination being requested for.
Okay. And what is the Common App?
The Common App is a group of roughly 500 colleges and universities that come together and provide a single application for admissions. These are predominantly more competitive colleges and universities. Your guidance counselors at the high school would be aware of this organization, it's a nonprofit, and they have single application online that can be utilized by, you know, variety of different colleges. So if you have students that are, you know, applying to the ID League or very prominent private universities out in the West, such as Everdine or USC, these are, these are members of that organization. One single application allows a student to apply to any of those, and we've had a partnership with the Common App channel for about a decade.
Okay. And what's the CEEB code?
Great, so that's the college board code that every high school is administered, and that's a code that validates that you are a legitimate high school. You can imagine in the world, and mostly not in the US, but internationally, there's a lot of, you know, mil, degree mil organizations that are fraudulently suggesting that you will receive some sort of a certification or degree. Parchment takes an enormous amount of care of that to not work with this organization. So we want to work with a legitimate high school, and the CEEB code is a code that your high school has that validates them as an official, you know, legitimate high school.
Okay, thank you. All right, I remembered my question. It had to do with breaches, it was on the heels of asking if you'd ever had a breach, and then I wondered, in the contract and both online for the end user, I don't see any language about if you were to have a breach, how you handle that.
Yeah, that's a great question. So, you know, we obviously maintain a substantial amount of insurance, everything from cyber liability insurance to, you know, general liability, I mean, we're a well-insured organization, so we have that obviously as a remedy to those cases that, you know, situations. We also employ about 100 engineers, software engineers, that are constantly maintaining their solution, and so our philosophy is more preventative than reactive, but obviously it's something we're to refer, you know, we have the resources to be able to remedy that breach.
Okay, but how, who's, I, it doesn't tell us in our contract who's responsible for notifying the users of a breach like that, so if our students?
Oh yeah, no, no, we definitely are, right? I mean, we're, if there was some sort of a data breach, we would contact you as our member, as well as any students that were impacted, you know, by that data breach.
Okay. I just don't see anything about that, and that was one of the concerns that I had. Okay, next question I have is, so the National, I'm sure you're familiar with the National Student Clearinghouse?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, so when I was reading through their terms of use and policies, they use TLS/SSL protocol. So what added protection comes from that TLS? And I could have just asked John, but it's on my list, so, I just wondered what the difference was, why they use both and why you only use one?
Oh my gosh, so I don't want to speak to the National Student Clearinghouse. Admittedly, they're a competitor of ours, I happen to know both, they're, they're great people, but I do believe that if we put us head to head in a, in a security and technology due diligence, you'll find that Parchment is far more advanced when it comes to adherence to security and, than National Student Clearinghouse. I would argue that Parchment is really a technology company. At the end of the day, we're a software company. National Student Clearinghouse have a lot of really good things, and they have services we do not offer that are really great, but they're not a technology company, and so I, you know, I don't think it's comparing apples to apples.
Can I, can I help you out there, Jeff?
Please.
It's John Mastin. TLS is Transport Layer Security and SSL is Secure Socket Layer. They're basically encryption protocols, primarily you'll find them in an email scenario. TLS has replaced SSL and we're into revision two of TLS nationally. So TLS two would be kind of the common standard in email transmission protocols. Or some port 587 of TCP IP.
That all makes sense.
Right. TLS, TLS encryption is the high watermark standard that you're looking for in any email.
In the contract, it refers under Section 1.20 supplemental, oh no, 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 not supplemental document, there's supplemental terms, and it seems that there's additional language. Is our board able to get a copy of the supplemental terms? Because I don't believe that's.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, now I'm, now I'm gonna just ask a couple of questions about the terms of use and privacy. Well, the terms of use, first of all, I have big, I have concerns that our students don't clearly understand what they're agreeing to when they click "I accept," and I think we can all agree that we all click "I accept" all the time without reading 27 pages of legal ease, but my concerns for our students, because this is, you know, this is their future that we're talking about, and within this terms of use, we seem to be connecting a lot of data to the end user once they register on your site, and that's where my concern is. So when I read through the terms of use for the students, it talks about your access to the site, any use of the services of the site constitutes your and where appropriate your parent's acceptance of the terms, then it refers to the supplemental terms, which I already asked for, because it does say the supplemental terms shall control with respect to the service they're going to use, so I definitely think we need to see that. And then my concern is where it says, "Parchment is under no obligation to update the site, the services, or any information or data contained in the site or used in connection with the services." Why aren't you under any obligation to, to update the site?
It's a great crisis and I can't answer. I think that's the under boilerplate with any software company. You know, we do our best, obviously, keep our product maintained in accordance with our relationships with our customers, you know, that's probably some kind of legal boilerplate that we've been attempting to do, and I'm sorry, I don't.
That's okay, that's okay. I have more where that came from. So under number four, registered user account password insecurity, it says to the user, so our students, "You acknowledge and agree that you shall have no ownership or other property interest in your account, and you further acknowledge and agree that all rights into your account are and shall forever be owned by and in your to the benefit of Parchment." But then below, just below that, under content and use of the site, it says, "Parchment does not claim ownership of your content,"
Correct.
Which seems like a contradiction to me, so...
So the content is the records, right? Is the information you're uploading to us. We do not own it, we will never own it, it's not ours to do anything, you know, other than fulfill a request. We take that very, very seriously. So if the student uploads their transcript, I mean, sorry, if the school district uploads a student's transcript or a letter of recommendation, a school profile, we don't own it, it really belongs to the student, and then it, you know, it secondarily belongs to you. Our user faces are intellectual property, so that's what that statement is referring to, that the way we do things, the way we handle our user experience, that does belong to Parchment, and that's our own intellectual property.
Okay.
And oftentimes, and these are great discussions, and I'm glad that, glad you're being so thorough, you know, oftentimes folks refer to us as kind of an online UPS or FedEx, right? We're taking some information that you're giving us, we're delivering it, that's our job, right?
Right. Except there's a lot of fun stuff in the in-between, and if I can't fully understand this contract, this is the student, you know, this is where the student is supposed to go and click "I accept" and understand the consequences of everything I just accepted, if I can't understand it, it's hard for me to think of how our students are going to understand it. And everything is developing in the tech world so quickly, and the doctrine that's taking place coast to coast in our country, I mean, really gives me pause to stop and think about what we're setting our students up for, and this is the first time that I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, anybody in the room, that we've ever pushed our students to a consumer site where it's, it's not an opt-in thing, it's being uploaded in whole. Is that correct? Anybody?
But it's optional for the students to actually use the site.
But their information is still uploaded to the site whether they use it or not, but it also calls in the contract for us to encourage them to use the site, to promote the site, to endorse the site.
Where is that language?
In the, in the school district contract in your book. Inform credential under 3.2 under member obligations. Inform the credentialed owners, which is the students, and authorize users about the benefits of the Parchment services. So now we're promoting this business. And then number three is place Parchment name and logo and provide descriptive text in hyperlink promoting the Parchment services on the member website, so, you know.
I would argue that promoting or talking about the use and possible benefits of using the program is a little bit different than encouraging a student to use it. You're just laying out the information and the student still has the option of participating or not. Yes?
Yeah, we can argue about this Tuesday.
Right, we've got Mr. Harris on the phone, and we don't want to be disrespectful at this time at the right moment.
Okay. So, and this is where my concern comes in. Number 11, links to and from other sites, and then it goes on for your convenience, and then there's a lot of stuff on your site. I mean, you have a lot of places for these students to go once they've ordered their transcript, there's a lot of other things that they can do on your site. But then you make it very clear, you agree that it's impossible for Parchment to monitor the materials, and you're pretty much accessing everything on your site at your own risk. The reason that concerns me is, and I can't remember exactly which document it is, but there's two places, one in the contract and one in either the privacy or terms of use that talks about the framing, where you specifically say the students are not, or the customer is not allowed to use framing whatsoever, but then your partners, you've got a bunch of different ways to say partners, that they do use framing, and so the student needs to be very careful essentially about making sure that they understand just because one of your partners uses a framing that looks like Parchment, it's not actually Parchment. So that's kind of concerning for me as well, because when I'm looking at some of the places like Facebook, I'm appalled that, you know, there's a single sign-on for Facebook, to be honest with you. Facebook and Google both you're working with, and they've got serious issues with data breaches and transparency about their data breaches. And convenience is a lot of what our students look for, a lot of what our adults look for, but there's more to all of this in my mind than just convenience, because I don't know that putting your data that you're accumulating, because you do talk about how you're, you're going to collect a lot of data on these kids in addition to what we upload, and you're going to connect it together. And so that's a concern for me, because if there is a data breach after somebody's been using this site for two years, there's a lot of information that's going to be housed there, and you're very clear about these students need to read the privacy policies in terms of use of every single vendor that you promote or that, you know, is on your site, and we all know that's just not going to happen. So, why do you have Facebook and Google single sign-ons on your site? In light of everything that's happened?
It's purely for convenience. A lot of our, today, more than 50% of the requests you receive come in via mobile device. Your students, they would gain a lot of convenience by being able to order their transcripts, their nutrition or lunch, and to do that, they can pull out their smartphone. So these are just added conveniences.
Okay.
Most of these features, believe it or not, have been evolved because of requests from our members. High school counselors or registrars tell us, "Gosh, you know, our kids are accessing a lot of other sites using their Facebook credentials, it'd be very easy for them to also use that access to Parchment." So these are, these are just ways that we kind of help promote convenience and ease of use.
So, and this isn't just a question for you, this is a question for us in the room to consider too. I understand convenience and I understand getting things quicker, but at some point there's a major responsibility at this point in time to educate our students on what exactly that convenience can cost them, and I don't see anybody in tech really doing that, and that's concerning for me.
Mr. Mastin, do you have the same objection to what Nicole has just said that you had when I spoke?
I will reserve my comments until Mr. Cohen's done, thank you.
So, under the feedback part, member will have no obligation to provide feedback. Member hereby grants Parchment, Parchment services, and I've seen this repeatedly through the, all three documents. A royalty-free worldwide transferable, sub-licensable, irrevocable perpetual license to use, disclose, reproduce, license, or otherwise distribute and exploit any feedback as it sees fit entirely without obligation or restriction of any kind on account of intellectual property rights or otherwise. And that's also in the student as well. And so, what that says to me is, any feedback that the student gives you, you can use for your own purposes regardless of whether or not the student asks you to remove it unless the student's from California or the EU. Is there any reason why as a company you wouldn't just allow any student under 18 that uses your services to remove any of the feedback that they've given you?
It's a good question, that, you know, maybe that's for our account, but I can't address that specifically, sorry.
That's okay. Almost out of time. And then in all caps, under disclaimers, you know, you talk about, "Parchment may offer new beta features or tools which the users may experiment with." I feel like that's really exploiting students to be able to use them in, you know, in a beta environment. Anyway, is now we're on to privacy. I'm concerned about the persistent cookies, but I know that's normal. I'm really concerned about Google Analytics. What's that?
It's actually pretty standard.
I'm sure it is, but that doesn't mean that it's...
Right.
That it's okay, just because it's standard. I'm really concerned about the "do not track" signals, how come you don't currently respond to that?
Can you repeat the question?
Oh, it says, "We do not currently respond to 'do not track' signals," and I'm just wondering why.
Yeah, I, it's something we did address with our engineers, I'm not familiar as to why, why we do or do not, we don't do that.
Okay. Let me see if there's any other big ones. I have concerns that you make it clear to the student that we're going to gather information from other sources, public information on you, personal information provided through other services or organizations that you have agreements with, so that's a concern. And if anybody else, oh, the social media, teams and your partners, single sign-on did I guess my biggest concern is why California, I mean, it's obviously their legislature that was smarter than the average legislature, I guess, which is funny coming from California, but that, that they have a law that allows underage kids to remove their information from the site, and I don't, I know that a lot of this is boilerplate, I get that, I understand you're a tech company and they all read very similar, doesn't make them any easier to understand, but I would, I would really like to see, I would really like to see our students under 18 be able to remove the information that they put on your site up until their 18th birthday, if they chose to. I mean, they're still minors, and they don't fully understand the green light that they're giving to everybody that comes to your site or utilizes your site, so I don't know if that's an option.
We agree with you, right?
And then, this isn't for you, this is for Mr. Becker, did we get a list of the actual data points that were going to be uploaded?
Transcript?
I know, but I don't know what that means.
I don't, I don't have that.
Okay. But we'll have it before the board.
I sent you, I sent you my others.
You did?
Yeah.
When did you do that?
I just wore me.
Really?
Yes.
I didn't see it all.
Jeff, it's Mr. Mastin. Is this information uploaded to PDF format? How are we uploading?
It can be, we really can. We really can take any sort of image format. We can also take it directly from your SIS as a print output. So we can take a PCL for control language and then we also can convert that to XML.
Okay, but I guess my point is, is that we're not taking disparate data points. We're taking a single data point in a PDF or a picture output.
Yeah, that's right. Right, we're taking different documents that could just be transcripts or it could be a transcript, a letter of recommendation, a second or a school report, a school profile. I mean, it really is up to the high school to determine what it wants to make orderable and then, you know, what fits on the needs of the student, what can be fulfilled.
It does, but it doesn't help me understand what it is that we're going to actually vote on. Because, you know, in the contract that we have in front of us, it says multi-record fulfillment, transcripts, immunizations, diplomas, IEPs, and other academic records. So has anybody sat down and determined exactly what we're going to make available?
Yes, that's actually in the...
I mean, I saw up front in the very beginning where it had the check marks.
So, your proposal, which is right at the end of that item in the agenda, we talk about official transcripts. That's not it?
Enrollment verification certificates and graduation verification certificates?
That's it, yes, thank you. Those are the three things. Is that in the front part?
Yes, well, it's under exhibit A at the bottom of the page. But, and I remember when I asked this last time, you said this wasn't the full... This wasn't exactly what was going to be signed or submitted.
Thank you. This was the actual contract, and so as we start to check things off, we start the submission process. But the contract came with these things identified, so we would actually be a no-pay. That would be checked if the contract is approved by the board. But it does identify the transcripts, the enrollment verification, and the graduation verification as the only things that we are going to support them.
It's just I'm not an attorney, so when I think about us voting on this and I look under this contract and I look under the... Well, I guess it does say parchment training options, so that's an option. I just don't want there to be any, you know, when I see IEP, that really concerns me. I don't even want anything concerning an IEP.
Right, so this is the contract that we received with checks of only what we have agreed to. So we haven't executed any of the box that we would simply be the ones on that first page.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
Any other questions?
I have a very small number of questions. Jeff, you're a co-founder?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So you would know what your latest SOC 2 results are?
Yes, I don't have the exact date, but it's been within the last 12 months.
Okay, and how did you fare with that? Was there a lot of remediation needed to be done, very small amounts? How did you characterize it?
No, I mean, you know, when you start the SOC 2, it's a great question. When you start the SOC 2 process, right, initially, they're going to find a lot of different areas that need, you know, need attention. After doing it repeatedly, right, we fix those and over time, it's, you know, become more and more of a secure organization. So I believe we've been doing the SOC 2 process now for, I think this was our eighth year or something like that. So it's, you know, we're a much more established organization today than ever before.
And I'm sure you're changing auditing firms every couple of years or so.
Yeah, you know, I couldn't even tell you who we work with anymore. We have a security officer, and this is really under his domain. His name is Aaron Elliott. And I think he's actually down on some of our calls at the high school at times. But Aaron is really involved in overseeing that process.
Okay. What's your, if you don't mind me asking, what's your gross revenue?
You know, as a private company, we don't reveal that. And I'm sorry about that. But I can tell you, we have now over 150 employees.
Okay. And?
And that's all here in the US. In fact, half of our employees are Arizona-based in our stock sale office. We also have offices in California, Colorado, as well as Washington DC.
And do you derive any revenue from any source outside of the one that we're contracting with you for?
We do. We don't derive, if there are questions, do we derive revenue off of selling data? Absolutely not. We do provide our services to a variety of other types of entities, including colleges and universities. They're a big part of our business. We have the same services available at colleges and universities as we do in the K-12. We also provide our services to a variety of different professional credentialing organizations, as well as to the GED, NCAA, and many others.
And I guess what I'm looking for is, at any point, do you monetize any information gleaned from the registration process and creating the login? Are you in any type of a financial arrangement with a company like Facebook or Google?
Never.
Or are you a draw income?
No, no. Our reputation hinges on our ability to provide high insecurity and, you know, we would never do anything outside of, you know, what our job is, which is offering online request, proxy, and delivery with academic records.
And you mentioned you had cyber liability?
We do.
And may I inquire as to the limited cyber liability insurance policy that you'll...
Yeah, we need to get you copies of the guest pages or record of that you'd like.
I think that would be something I would like to see. Because in the IT world, it's not if you've been hacked, it's when will you be hacked free?
Yeah, absolutely.
Mrs. Ellinger, any questions?
No.
Mrs. Ramon?
No.
Okay, I have a few, Jeff. This is Kathy Cox. Kathy Cox. I understand that either you or someone, a rep from the company, told the high school that Lake Havasus High School is one of very few high schools in Arizona that have not gone into a contract with Parchment. Is that correct?
I will pay credit for that, and it is true. We serve more than 80% now of high schools in the state of Arizona from the largest school districts like Mesa or Gilbert, Chandler, and others. We also have many rural school districts, charter schools, private schools. I think we're somewhere in the range around 83% of all high schools use Parchment in the state. And about 90% of all colleges and universities use us to send their transcripts. So we have a very good relationship at higher level as well.
Okay, another question. What I'm reading now with the board rationale is that you provide a well-documented delivery to the requested school. Can you describe how your company knows that the, I'm assuming it's an email, got delivered?
Yeah, it's one of the big values of using a service like ours. Because, you know, historically, when students have, and it goes back, I'll tell you real quickly. When I applied to college back in the 90s, my transcript never made it to the college. And in fact, I received a letter from the dean of admissions three weeks before I started my freshman year revoking my admission because tremendous panic and stress and worry in my family. Today, with Parchment, the student's actually getting email notifications as well as can see online in a queue status of their document. So they actually know that Lake Havasus High School has sent the document and they know that the college or university has successfully received it. The high school as well as the school district will also have access to these reports that show those statuses. So this is just a great way for you to, you know, mitigate your own risk around this process and also provide, you know, peace of mind your students can need.
Okay, I need to clarify something. You said they will know when Lake Havasus High School sends the transcript. I thought Parchment sent the transcript.
Nope.
Lake Havasus High...
The transcripts are requested through Parchment, but somebody at the high school is going to be uploading that information to Parchment and most likely will be approving those requests before they're sent. So we have a stopgap in the process because we know nothing about your students on purpose. And so typically, there's a counselor or registrar that's going to be reviewing a queue of requests and then making a designation to either approve or hold or perhaps not approve the request based on, you know, your own rules.
Okay, so you also say that all students will receive one free official transcript. Is that printed off, then by the registrar, and handed to the student? How does the student?
That's from the school and that's us.
I know, but is that through email or is that through a printing?
Print and copy, sealed.
And so the school has to do that anyway? All right, and what kind of training do you provide for this?
Great question. So training is unlimited. We have many free training options. We have a variety of different videos that the school can watch to learn the mouth and whistle. Or we host webinars several times a week where school officials and employees can participate and learn how to use the program.
Okay.
It's super simple. Most of our members tell us that they participate in one 30-minute training. They become a guru of all things parchment, and they really never need again.
Okay, thank you. That is all that I have. Anybody else?
I just wanted to ask one last question. A lot of the questions that I have, Jeff, come from Mr. Joel Reidenberg. Are you familiar with him? Joel Reidenberg?
I apologize.
That's okay.
If you're unfamiliar, maybe I should be, and if I, you know, I apologize.
Well, no, I just want you to understand why I'm asking the questions that I am. So Mr. Reidenberg is, you know, an expert. He was the inaugural Microsoft visiting professor of IT policy at Princeton University. And his credentials are astounding. And he testified before the Committee on Homeland Security and the Committee on Education and the workforce how data mining threatens student privacy. And so my questions really come from his testimony because he's talking about school districts in here. So if you're not familiar with him, you know, it's all available. I mean, the PDF of the testimony is online, and that's where a lot of my questions come from. I'm putting this up next to contracts, and that's where I'm coming up with questions. So anyways, just wanted to let you know.
These are really good questions, and they're very valid and important and timely topics to be discussing because I'm a parent as well, and I, like all of you, I'm sure, am nervous about the growing threats from outside around our own privacy and security. I always suggest, and I say it, but I'm a vendor, I always suggest the best due diligence you can perform is to speak with other schools and school districts that use the program, many of whom in Arizona have been using Parchment for well over 10 years. And I was highly recommended despite your, you know, communication with those. If you need help or references or others, we're more than happy to provide those. You know, I think you'll hear that we do really good work. We have a great reputation. And it's not just in Arizona, it's all over the country.
Okay, anything else?
No, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And if we have any further service or you have any additional requests for us, please just contact me, and I'm happy to fulfill anything I can.
Thank you, Jeff.
Have a great day.
If you can print a transcript, let you know. If you give me a minute, I'll go print that transcript.
Send a text. Your best resource, probably have her go pull one right now. Sorry, I can't tell how long I'm talking because I'm sick. Sarah would probably be your best resource to go print one off real quick. Are you able to do that from here?
I can't print, no.
Huh?
I can't print. I can go get one very quickly.
Will it look different from the transcript we have now? The transcript that you're going to print? Is it any different from the transcript that we have now?
No, it's from our students.
The question was, what data is actually on the transcript that gets uploaded? That is the question. So I wanted to look at a transcript so I could see if I can leave this data.
I can print so we can.
So can we continue the discussion? Are you comfortable while we're waiting for the transcript?
Sure.
Okay. I have some things to follow up on, but if you want to start.
Well, I was just going to mention, because I was wondering, what, aside from the convenience for our students, what does this save us? And so when I was on their site, Parchment site, I was reading some of their testimonials. So Santa Ana High School, which is a large high school, Santa Ana High School, their college and career pathway coordinator said, "We saved an average of 8.34 man-hours and $200 to $333 for every 50 transcripts we processed through Parchment." So that just started my brain thinking, like, how much savings is this really? And I understand the convenience, I get that. But I just wondered, based on our numbers, because I was trying to calculate, what is this really saving us?
Zero dollars. I think the honest answer here is...
Because we're still doing the work.
Eventually, we'll get to $0. Initially, I think this is going to cost us something past the buy-in point. And the reason why is it's new. You're going to put man-hours into training, getting the registrar up to speed on how the upload process works. Obviously, when you do your first upload, things aren't going to go right. There'll be a massage process to that. Guess what, next year, even if we have the same registrar, there'll be a little bit of a hiccup in the upload process. And until you get this three, four years down the road, you're probably going to be spending money past the contract cost on this. I think from my perspective, I share your concerns on data security. I really do. I think the more that we push things out of the old tried and true methods of delivery, even though they're not necessarily always tried and true as this is the case, we get to a point where we start putting more and more out of our control. We get more and more risky in what we're doing. That said, the flip side of this is that we need to be able to say to a student when he's in a transcript, that it arrived. And short of certified mail return receipt, I don't know that we can do that in the way that we're doing this today. We put it in the mail, we put a stamp on it, out the door it goes. Cross our fingers and hope it gets to the registrar's office over at the college.
And why can't we send an encrypted PDF of an official transcript where you have confirmation from your email?
You're still, I mean, if we did that quick and dirty, we'd get something like one through courier which would encrypt it. It's something that embeds into Outlook. Push the button, encrypt the email, send it off, return receipt, blah, blah, blah. At the end of the day, you still have to train the employee on that flow, how that gets done. You're also burdening the registrar every time somebody requests a transcript now to push that out as opposed to putting a stamp on an envelope. I think once this gets inculcated and you get out to that third year and we start getting all the actual bugs out of this upload process, I think that we're going to be in a position where there'll still be a cost. Our registrar is going to breathe a little bit more. I mean, that's obvious when Santa Ana is saying that they're saving a couple of bucks. And we take a little stress off of the position. I think that's an important thing to do. But I think the thing that we really have got to look at is whether you like it, or I like it, or anybody else likes it. We live in an electronic world. And moving data this way is just the way it's going to be. The other thing is, is that when we talk to a company like Parchment, and there are several others out there that do this, they all have contracts with these colleges. These colleges are paying them on the other side to make sure this goes in and gets whammed in to the right student account on the other side. So not only do we have, gosh, it got delivered. We know it went to the right account at the college. So everything lines up. And guess what, if it didn't? Hey, guys, this didn't work right. Can you fix this for me? Done.
Okay. I have some information. Sue Sandrin, the registrar at the high school, contacted me because of the article that appeared in the paper. And I think Pam Ashley took her... And I think Pam Ashley took her, her reporting right from this board agenda item. And she was upset because she felt that it, uh, gave a bad, cast aspersions on, on her office. She told, she told me some interesting things. She said, "Only half of our seniors request transcripts." So that my first concern would be that we would be requiring every senior to come up with that five dollars when only half of them would request transcripts according to her statistics. She also said that she gets, uh, she has a, a, a procedure. She gets a phone call, uh, or, or a letter, or an email asking for her to send off a transcript. And there is a release that the, um, student has to sign, or possibly the parent. And, um, that she makes a notation and she keeps all of those are kept for four years in a, in a folder. Uh, she makes a notation that it got sent out. Now, there is, uh, no return receipt. But she, she says more often than not, her requests are for, called an official mailed document rather than an electronic. I'm just telling you what she told me. I, I just found this all very interesting. Uh, I'm trying to, I'm trying to determine what we already do and what, um, parchment does that we don't do. She said, "In all of the years that she's been there, she's never had a complaint, uh, about transcripts not arriving." The only problem that she's had is with ASU. There's something wrong with their procedure that every year the transcripts there, on their end, come in. Because normally she's mailing them in and they're, they're, they're backed up and that's their, that's their problem on their end. But she does not believe, she says most of, she doesn't believe it's on her end. She says, "Most of these transcripts go out the day that their request came in." Uh, "Only under most unusual circumstances would it ever take up to three days for her to turn and get them out." Let's see what else she told me.
What was her name?
Sue Sonderen is the registrar, S-O-N-D-E-R-E-N. So we're, we are already, I mean, it was like you just said a moment ago, we're having students pay five dollars, no cost to the district, to do something that we're already going to do anyway. And, uh, I don't, I don't get that if Sue's already doing it, then, um, well, why, why are we having students pay for this service? And she did say that, um, let's see, what was it that she said about the, the transcripts? Let's see, she gets them out the same, she gets them out the same day. Maybe, maybe it'll come to me. But anyway, that is my question. I don't, I don't understand what value this is to the students, um, for something that she, if she's going to be doing anyway. I'm, I'm, I'm hoping that we're not coming up with a solution in search of a problem. And that's almost what it sounds like to me. Uh, I'm not sure that we really have the, the need for this. I do think, something that John mentioned, Sue may retire in a year with a new registrar. Uh, it might be necessary to go to something like this. At that time, it's Sue's extremely efficient and organized and great father and that kind of thing. So that, that's just my thinking, um, right now about this, is, of those kinds of issues.
Something, something I would throw over to you as well. You need an official transcript. You, you need to have the sealed transcript. When we do this electronically, it's considered sealed based on the fact that we're sending this out through a, through a recognized service. The, um, my son, he applied to school, actually has, it's in his Google Docs. He has a screenshot of his transcript that he used to apply. Now, obviously, when we, when we finalize his college plans, we're gonna have to get them lost transcript sent from the registrar's office. If these are all uploaded and we're gonna, we're still gonna give the student a certain amount of, of free to send out, aren't we?
Just the, just the one free admission?
One free graduation.
Really?
Always.
So... All the unofficial copies, the, um, they can get those now for their, and during the year for their applications, but...
Right, but, but, so, so to finalize that, it would still have their official copy. So we're not, we're not necessarily changing that part, we're just changing how we're delivering that part.
Well, something, go ahead.
I, I'm sorry, my question is Sue, would that be possible?
She's a fellow.
I would ask, um, from Mr. Reidenberg, because I think that, well, she may not have received complaints. Others have, and so I know he has, uh, some other information. I want to put you on the spot, Scott, I was...
I'm very careful how I speak of employees. I mean, we're in a public forum all day, so Sue does a great job, she always has. I will give you an example where this really came about and it was a, oh my gosh, are we, are we kidding me right now? Gosh, I hope this does not get back to her. We had an incident that happened at Thunderbolt, and I'll share this incident where there was a school threat. I get a phone call from Officer Hart. Do you have anybody, a brother, a sister, anybody that has applied to school in the San Francisco area? That's where our threat came from, where it was remote, it was two year, two, three years ago, if, if you recall.
I do.
I went to the registrar's office and said, "Do you have any records of anybody that has applied in the San Francisco area?" And we sent transcripts to them, so that we could get names in a timely manner. The file drawer opened up, and I am not joking, a stack of papers, this high, I'm not exaggerating, was handed to me. I'll take the top half, you take the bottom half. I said, "Are they in alphabetical order? How are, nope, in the date that they came in, it just goes on top." So what it was, you open it, ASU.
Right, one at a time.
One at a time, and how archaic, really.
No, I agree.
And had there, had that been an actual threat and the timeliness of that, I would hate to be the person on the other end saying, "This was our final system, that's what we have to work with." So I mean, it's, it's another example of it. I do not doubt that she gets them out the same day. We're, we've received complaints in my office saying the school hasn't received them. I know we sent them out, I know she does her due diligence. She, I mean, the poor lady sits there with an embosser and squeezes it by hand.
Right.
Signs it, dates it, puts it in an envelope, then has to seal that envelope. So the envelope seal has that on the back also. And then obviously, we, we pay the postage on that as well. The school that, that I can reference this year, South Carolina was the university, and these parents were livid that it was on our end. And I explained the process on our end and that I know it has gone out. We sent it three times to ensure that we did send it out. And I visually saw the, the second and third one go out. I don't monitor that on a daily basis with my job, there's enough other things. And I trust Sue, she does a great job, like I said. But it's, it's just part of the process of having that documentation. We, we live in a world of documentation. If I wanna get rid of a teacher, um, because they're not performing to, to the level that they should, it is documentation, documentation, documentation. The same thing happens with the students in our school and all employees.
Well, here's my question then, so we go with parchment. But Sue is going, or the registrar is going to be doing all of this anyway and getting it out, so I don't see...
Well, you're sending it electronically.
Her, her end of the deal would be, and, and my direction to her also, because it, it pointed to the, the direction that John, or I don't remember which one you stated at Santa Ana, I think it was Nicole.
Yeah.
And I don't know if that's even the right high school.
Yeah, Santa Ana.
I, my direction would be, we do this one time a day. It is Monday morning you come in and the first thing you do is you log on that computer who has requested overnight. Nobody sits during the school day and fills out their college application. They go home and sit with mom and dad. Mom and dad threaten them to all ends of the earth, John can say it, I can't. And, and it took a miracle to get, get my daughter through that. Tuesday morning, first thing you do, you come in and see who's requested it. The only non approvals would be if they owe the school docu, or, or monetary values, where, where we do the same thing for graduation. You don't walk at graduation until all your fees are paid. And that's where she would vet that process and not check that box and hit send. And all thirty of them go off at once.
Okay, but my point is, is that you could do that tomorrow. You could go into her office without a contract with parchment. You say, you know, "This is what I want to have happen on Mondays."
She's, I'm taking about five steps out of the, for her by going through this. She would look at the computer screen and see thirty people requested transcripts last night. She would look at the list of do not send transcripts because of the monetary. She'd put, she would hit a box of click all and then unclick the ones that haven't paid their fees and then hit submit.
Okay.
And that's...
That's, those are the nuts and bolts, I mean, to hear is how it works. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
So I, I don't ever wanna be put to task on how much money is this gonna save us? Because I would have to sit there and, please document your time, and then, and we'd have to divide all that out. But, but I do believe there's gonna be a savings. And I believe in, um, people equity as well, or not equity, but, um...
Capital.
People capital, um, that the stress that we're putting on individuals, leave this task, this task, this task, and the amount of tasks that they need to complete in a day.
That, that's the right...
Especially coming out of that office.
I, I think that's the right answer because, because at the end of the day, happy employee, happy administrator.
Well, I, I love my job and, and my job is, it, it, a lot of the negativity falls on my shoulders and, and I would much rather, I'm, I'm a servant leader, if you will, because if something's going wrong, it's my job to fix it. Um, it's my job to make sure that our employees are happy and, and doing the best job they can. And I will take, I'll take that other end of things and, and handle it as I see fit.
What, one of the concerns that I have is that, something that most of us have experienced is where, uh, we opened up an account with a company, opened it at one time. And what, I thought, we, we used it one time, we had the password. We knew that we'd most likely be going back there at some point in the future. We didn't write the password down and I have a password book that I tell my husband at the house, ever get his on fire, but get everything, get the password book out of the house. So I, I, that, that's important. But, um, something like this, if the student gets, uh, greets his password, I can see a student calling Sue or the registrar in three or four years and say, "Now, what was the name of that company that has our transcripts?" Because I, I don't even know where my password is, but what just, what's the name of the company? I don't remember that company. So he's gonna make the call to her anyway. And then while he's on the phone with her, she's going to say, which she is the one, I, when I said that, brought this up. She said, "I'll say, well, why don't I just send it to you right now," you know, because she can. So that's just kind of what I, I predict is going to end up happening in the future after we get these kids to college. And then later on, when they want to get, use it for something else, but the transcript for, for another reason. They've forgotten all about parchment, they know it's out there, but they don't know what it is, they don't remember it. So I'm, I just...
That link is, that link will be on our website for user availability. Um, all of us, me included, have, have gone on to sites and forgot your password. You get to hit that forgot password, you get your email to reset that password.
But you have to remember the company, the name of the company.
That's my statement on, that, that would be on our school website.
On the website, okay.
Website, and if they forget where they went to high school, I don't know what they should do.
Okay, good, okay, great, good.
I, I want to say that I don't think this is an option. I mean, look at the medical field, the finance field, even my real estate field. We have, we do everything online electronically. And if we want to postpone it for another year or something, that's different. Other than that, I don't see this as an option. We have to get transcripts sent out electronically sooner rather than later. The only option is, oh, okay, do we not want to use parchment? Then we can talk to five other companies that do the same thing. And Sue or anyone, they cannot send bonded transcripts right now. They can just send an email. This company does that process for us, I'm guessing. So I, I really don't, don't know, I don't see how we cannot do this electronically, I'm sorry.
No, I'm, I'm, but I, I, what I wanna do is weigh, weigh both sides and what...
Yeah, but like, look at the medical field. Everyone is on EMR, it's not, it's not a choice, it's the law.
Okay.
You've got to be, look at the finance field. You've got to do certain things online only, it's not an option. In real estate, we sign everything online, other than if it has to be autorized. You just have one documented transaction, everything is electronic. And the ease of doing that and for the students, the ease of getting their transcripts to, to wherever they need it, to ten different, fifteen different schools is important.
Nicole's, I, I think Nicole's concerns about privacy are really legitimate. And I don't know if you took the time to read the Professor's of Fordham's letter, but it was, it really made you think. And my other issue is the fact that right now, only about half of our students, um, even ask for transcripts. And I have a problem with the other half paying the five dollars for a service.
They don't, they don't have to register. Their information's uploaded, but they don't have to go in and actually register.
So when they ask for the transcript is when they pay the five dollars, okay, all right, thank you.
And as for privacy, I mean, I'm talking medical and finance. Those are the most vulnerable places that it can be. And I'm sure parchment and other companies will find ways to overcome the privacy problem to the best extent possible.
You'll, you're, you're always gonna have a privacy issue, always. It, it, there's, there's not a way to combat it in the electronic age. I do know that when I sat in October through this, I did ask the encryption question. And the encryption question, the answer very simply, it's two hundred and fifty-six bit AES, which is the witness test for sending NATO over the internet. When I look at medical or I look at financial, uh, systems, we're looking at two hundred and fifty-six bit AES. When I set up a point-to-point VPN anymore, it's two hundred and fifty-six bit AES. When they transmit the emails out, the emails are going out with tail of security on them. Basically, it's a certificated security, the certificate's gotta match the sending point or it's automatically rejected. So odds are you're not gonna get a bad, a bad transmit in, in, in that type of a scenario. So a lot of your security is good. I'm very happy to see that they're doing SOC two, uh, audit annually. I've got some concerns, and my concerns are more about the monetization of the student data and not on the transcript side of it.
And the future, and the future.
And, well, and, and they actually do allow for it. And it's, and it's at the portal where the student's giving up the data voluntarily, right, to utilize the service. And that's, that's where my concern is, and I think that's where a lot of Nicole's concern is as well.
It is because they, they specifically, even though he answered and said he was not, they were not being paid by Google or Facebook or, they absolutely can. They can take all the student data that that student enters in and they can change their policy tomorrow and they can start monetizing the data because it's not specifically prohibited in the contract. So the only thing that I'm gonna say is I understand the world that we live in. I utilize all the technology that I argue over every single day. My point is, is that things are changing rapidly. And to just say we're gonna do things because eighty percent of the school districts are doing them is not good enough for me. To, to, to enter into these new things, first, I feel like we need to have our own boilerplate contract for our school district when it comes to these tech contracts. And we can use the expertise of people like this, uh, Reidenberg, who is on top of all of it, to create our own contracts and force these vendors to incorporate what we want in their boilerplate contracts. And then the second thing is, we need to have some sort of course or class. Because our students do not understand how this is, all this convenience and fun and social media and single sign-ons and all this, they, they can't possibly comprehend how it's gonna affect them in five years, in ten years. And it will. And if we can't, um, think about those things for them, then I feel like we have no business even entertaining these ideas, so...
So one of the points that I was going to make and that, um, I don't, don't have many to, but one of the, the understandings that I got from all of the conversations was that the actual transcript, uh, transmission and so forth, that part is not the concern. And I think Mr. Reidenberg is gonna share what data goes up there. The concern is with the students register, what information they put up and how accessible that is, in particular, maybe for those students who are minors. I don't know about the fifty percent number, but we have, uh, our classes coming through at four hundred, so we're tracking two hundred students that are going to be requesting transcripts. But potentially all of them at some point could be requesting transcripts. This might be the opportunity for us to actually have a very specific and almost personalized lessons for students on just exactly what the risks are. So we're going to provide... So we're going to provide you this opportunity, here are all of the things you have to know before you sign up. Here's the potential, I mean, this could be a, a designed process for every single senior that would be able to get a lesson perhaps during nighttime and give them that information. Maybe use the sample data privacy agreement as the example that they go through, so they can see what those things are like. I do think this could be an opportunity, a teaching opportunity, while providing a really good service for our students.
I, I agree with that.
Anyone else?
Do you want to see a transcript?
Yes, I do.
We only have the next meeting start earlier, so in case we got done early, we wouldn't have to wait.
I am going to ask for these back though, because it is my daughter's. So to, to speak to some parenting ends of things as well. We all love our kids, we all trust them, I think Jamie will agree, I think John will agree, because they've been through this process. We have to trust that our kid went down to the counselor's office and filled out the request.
Boy, you've got a real slacker here.
Can I put you on the spot?
That was a joke.
Yes. I, I'm going to put Jamie on the spot, and she, she can kill me later possibly. Jamie did that for her daughter because she worked at the high school. I mean, we both trust our daughters beyond belief. I mean, your, your joke about I have a slacker, that I do have a really good student, but I also have to trust that she took the time in her teenage life to go down and fill out the paperwork. John is, I'll use John as an example too. His son has a screenshot of it, because he wouldn't take the time to go down and get another one. And, and that whole, but that holds up the process, and it was a huge fight in my household. Jamie's nodding her head, and it's a huge fight in her household as well, going through that process.
My kid's not a hundred percent done yet either, so he's still.
Yep, yep, but, but that trust factor of, we worked our tail off this weekend to complete four college applications. It was a tedious process, and then that last part that we need, oh, I forgot, I didn't have time. I went in to make up a test. I, I had track practice after school, that, it kind of helps the parent end of things too. Show me on your phone that you ordered this thing. I mean, and that's taken place as you're, you're applying too, so it's a, it's a peace of mind for parents as well.
Two questions.
Absolutely.
Is the permanent ID an SIS ID?
No, that's, that's our school assigned number.
So it has nothing to do with our.
You can go buy, you can go buy lunch, but. As luck, she doesn't, she does not have a school lunch account.
And then, second, what, i- if it wasn't a seller student like the one I'm holding in front of me, what would be included in the notes? What kind of notes would you see there?
The notes that go down there are, I want to make sure it's not on the back. That is where we add, I'm really vetting through this. That is where we add that they've passed the const, or the.
Civics test, or, okay.
And then here in the future, we also have to document that they pass CPR as well.
Okay.
So that's what.
So those are the only notes that would appear there if there were notes?
And, and currently, and I, I wish Sarah was still here, we do not send IEPs, that becomes the ownership of that person. We do not send any of that stuff. We give them the paperwork and coach them on their last IEP meeting, this paperwork is yours. If you go to MCC or any other school, it is your job to go to the special services department, and then you communicate and share that document with them.
It was on the notes, you want to see?
What was on that?
I, I showed him James's notes.
There's, there's notes.
Is there?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's his issue in his sophomore year, when he got into the.
Oh.
Yeah, that's all on there.
I'm sure he appreciates you talking about that on camera.
Wait, did you say that?
It went all over Facebook, so, you know, whatever.
Did you say that, that incident impacted you, no?
Yeah.
Well, no, I wouldn't want any discipline.
Right. Me neither. So. So it's being uploaded as a PDF document as it stands like this. Is there a way to go in and remove all the notes before we do that? Is that not realistic? I mean, we have a.
You, you, you then have gotten rid of the reason. You remember the, the thirty emails that came in, and all Sue has to do is select all and click, and all things go? Now she's got to go into everyone, open it up, and get rid of the, well, she can't get rid of the notes because it came from Parchment.
Where do the, no, no. Where do these notes get generated from, that, uh, land on the transcript? Where are they pulling?
That would be, that would be Sue hand putting those in. Everything that goes in the notes is a.
At the time.
So, so that begs the question, I mean, if, if you have a student that goes out on long-term suspension, is that always input on the notes on their official transcript?
I can, I can get you that answer by our media.
That's the question that we have, is do, are we legally required to enter long-term suspensions? Because there's a, a gap in attendance. So that may be one of the required entries, on my.
I mean, the explanation of the gap, sure, but the consequential part maybe. Doesn't need to know why, there was a gap and how it was filled.
Sorry.
I think we need to find out what the legal requirement is.
I think so.
Yeah. All right.
And I know that seems like a lot of work, but if we were going to pursue an agreement with Parchment, I wouldn't want to see any disciplinary information in the notes section at all, because we have a whole separate system that we're supposed to log all that into, correct?
Yes.
So it wouldn't be pertinent to, it would be detrimental to the student.
I need to clarify something, I just can't get this. Do we actually send the transcripts to Parchment? No, they stay here. But they get the student's information, and then if those students want to get a transcript, they email Sue with a list of names. Maybe thirty would come in on one day, and she could select all of them. So, okay, it would be our transcript, she would modify.
Is that, the, the, all of the student transcripts are uploaded. And then Sue releases permission for Parchment to access them from their uploaded file and send them. So she isn't uploading transcripts one at a time, they're all up there.
Right, oh yeah, no, I mean, I, that's what I originally thought, but I thought you were suggesting that the transcripts don't go from us to Parchment.
In the, in the original upload, they do.
Oh, yeah, that's what I originally thought.
Yeah.
I missed, I thought you missed this actual piece of paper, so I misunderstood the question as well, so.
They upload the roster and all the fields, I guess.
These.
Fields. But then when Sue gets the request, she's the one that actually sends the official transcript to whatever university has requested it through Parchment. That was my understanding.
Parchment sends it. She sends Parchment the permission to send it, and the.
Okay.
Because the student sent it in where they want. But the, the student can't communicate directly with Parchment, because they don't have any way of identifying the credibility of that student and that person. And so then, the registrar is the one who actually verifies this student is okay to have this transcript sent.
Jamie, that's me, she's.
Any other comments? All right. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second. Terry.
Scott, the school's transcript?
Yes.
Don Mastin?
Yes.
Lisa Womack?
Yes.
Arcana Alliar?
Yes.
Kathy Cott?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.